Now we'll move on to item six, conduct of business.
Item six A, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an exclusive negotiating rights agreement with the selected developer.
Okay, before city manager, just point out, there are some available seats up front, if any folks do. I know a lot of folks like to stay in the back, but you're welcome to come up, up close if you'd like, but thank you. So tonight, for those, just as a recap, we did meet here last evening and had a special meeting of the city council and interviewed two perspectives, and so we're back this evening in regards to having additional, any additional information and by the council for deliberation and/or consideration for approval of a developer. City manager?
Sure. Good afternoon to the mayor, the city council, and members of the public, both here and at home. My name is Javon Grogan and I serve as the city manager. We are here tonight for city council discussions and deliberation for the council to decide the preferred vendor that the city should enter into exclusive negotiations for with regard to a vacant 1.5 acre site at the Crossing Development. The Crossing Development borders Interstate I-380, El Camino Real, and is directly across from the shops at Tanfran Mall. The city of San Bruno hired CBRE to remarket that property, and we will have a presentation from CBRE to recap their efforts. The eventual development of a hotel on the site will add to the vibrancy of the local economy and build out the last remaining vacant portion of the Crossing Development, which is a 20-acre master planned community. The city of San Bruno purchased the property in 2012 for $1.4 million. The two proposals that we have before the city council today, one from Black Ridge and one from Cooper, each of the two developers are proposing a $6 million purchase price. However, as we saw last night in their proposal presentations, each has a unique skill set and background and approach to the project. The agenda for tonight will be a presentation by CBRE, five minutes from each developer to recap or expound upon the presentation that they provided to the city council last night, then we will take public comment, and then we will return to the city council for questions, discussion, and deliberation, and potentially final action on which developer the city should enter into exclusive negotiations with. That action will set in motion a number of items that are included within the CBRE presentation and a timeline, and so I will not go into that right now, but I will turn it over to CBRE. Jay Scholl and Henry Bowes will give a presentation.
And as they're walking to the podium, again, if you'd had speaker cards, they need to be turned into the city clerk so we can gauge how many folks will be speaking on this topic. Thank you, and turn it over to you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff. Hello, everyone. My name is Jay Scholl, and to my right here is Henry Bowes. We're both senior vice presidents with CBRE. I am the relationship manager and advisor to the city, and Henry is the hotel expert, so you're gonna hear a lot from Henry because this is a hotel opportunity. But we were engaged a little while ago. This is our team in terms of how we service every, every client that has a requirement to either sell or develop a hotel. You want to do this one, I mean?
Sure. I mean, just a, just a quick background. Of course, CBRE deals with all sorts of asset classes or real estate, as Jay alluded to. The hotels' practice is specific to that operation. As many people here know, hotels are unique. It's very labor intensive. It's a big operating model that's on top of the real estate that's very important to understand, and so investors, owners, operators, employees, and industry folks really focus on a specific set of their own criteria and assumptions that they use when they look at value on things like land and hospitality land. Seaberry Hotels is, right here, shows what we do domestically in the U.S., so we have 22 offices, 45 professionals. We did about $2.6 billion in transactions last year. I represent Northern California, a little bit of Hawaii, and do get as far south as Palm Springs, so I guess that brings me almost all the way down, and do a lot of hotel land. There is some relevant transactions here. When we talk about hotel land, just really quickly, we did this last night, their study session, but we do get involved all across the Bay Area from San Francisco down to San Jose, and we do do resort locations. So where the Napa Carmel, just for the record, we did, were involved in the Crossroad Hotel Development Site before it was sold to the city. Our process is straightforward. We did this last, last time, is our whole role as an advisor is to create competition, is to invite qualified developers who understand all of the nuances that come into the, the development and operation of a hotel, so that once that we, they are presented to the city, we know that they can deliver in terms of what they promise. Obviously, there are other things that go into it, like the economy, but those, the vigils that we did contact and go through the process are people that have done this in the past and are extremely qualified. We do go in the process and try to attract many of them, because as you might expect, a piece of land has a lot of different alternatives, and there's a lot of creativity in the people that do develop and understand exactly what they want to bring to that, that land. We were engaged in April of this year, and we did formally launch the campaign in May. There's a big industry conference in New York that was, it was showcased at, and we did go through the summer to identify those prospective developers who we thought would maybe be the best fit and who'd be the most aggressive, and we did identify two of those that are here today. Just to go through some numbers, I do want to say for the, the city council's benefit that we did outreach to those hotel operators and owners that are currently in San Bruno to be, have them as part of the process. We went out to 230 qualified developers, that's a big number in our industry, that have done this before. Thirty of those developers did execute a confidentiality agreement. That means they really dug into the opportunity and looked at it. We had six property tours. Yes, there's land there, but most important about the property tour is there's a lot of things around it, so we wanted to make sure they understood everything that was going on around that, and there's a lot of exciting things that are happening in San Bruno. We did receive five initial offers. We narrowed that down to three, and then we ended up presenting two yesterday. I don't know if you want to...
Right, you're on.
Yeah, there is some, there is some criteria. It's not just price, obviously, that goes into these decisions. It's the quality of the response that the, the groups gave us. It's their track record. It's how the, the cap, their capital comes, and capital means, you know, what kind of funds and cash they have in order to, in order to deliver on what they promised and actually get one, get a hotel built. It does involve their experience with labor and those that are here, so we understand that that's, that's going to be an issue as it is all throughout the Bay Area. We looked at their schedule, their timing, their creativity, and their understanding of not only what they want to do, but what the city wants to do. It's a partnership here. It's, you are the owner, but it's an important partnership because of the location, right, as we heard from a previous speaker, right there at the gateway at 380 in the El Camino. The two groups that presented yesterday, we just summarized really quickly so that we had it in one slide that you could see. Black Ridge and San Bruno Crossroads. San Bruno Crossroads is actually a new entity that they, they created just for this. It is Cooper Hotels, which the city manager referred to as really the genesis of that group, based in Tracy, but Cooper Hotels also has a large office in Arizona. Black Ridge is in Denver, and as you can see, as you go down, pretty similar in terms of pricing and definitely in terms of brand. Element by Weston, which we listed up there, is a Marriott brand. Brand is an important discussion when it comes to hotels, because brands do bring customers, and so it's a very large consideration for both of those parties. Number of rooms that we've listed there is something that they can get into after that. We did hear people ask about meeting space yesterday. Meeting space has been minimized in this, this go-round, which is different than the specific plan that was before, primarily because large meeting areas do take away space that could go to guest rooms. Guest rooms, on everyone's economic model, when it comes to hotels, is, is the best kind of source of income. We go through the development, development part of it. There was a big distinction in that regard. One proposed modular, the other went straight up with type one or type three, depending on exactly what height they could get and willing to work with the city, and as a result, they were a little bit different in terms of cost, development costs, which we show there. And finally, in terms of equity, we always like to understand exactly where the, the cash is coming, and both are well capitalized with specifically, with partners, not only in Black Ridge's case, a great third-party institutional partner, but in Cross, San Bruno Crossroads case, investors that are actually in the room here today. And that is it.
Okay, so now we would like to invite Black Ridge to the podium for any brief statements to expound on the presentation that was provided yesterday, or anything you would like to say.
And they did speak last night for 15, 20 minutes each and received questions from council last night. So this is just for everybody in the audience, any summary they'd like to offer.
Yeah, since we gave the presentation last night, I won't go into that part of it. I'm Scott McChesney with Black Ridge. You know, we're local, we're based in Denver, Colorado. We've done projects in San Francisco, Seattle, New York City, so some larger markets. You know, we've been looking, you know, we, we've been looking for another project out here in San Francisco area for some time. We've got a project we're working on in a couple other cities, so we know the area well. We know performance of the hotels in the area, so we'd be excited to work with the city and, and see if we can get to an acceptable transaction. Any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Thank you.
Representative from Cooper Hotels?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, city staff, and all the guests in Champa here today. So I, what I like to do is, as we presented also yesterday, I won't go into details, but just to summarize, San Bruno Crossroad Investment LLC is made up of very mature team. We have 30-plus years of experience of working together as hotel developer. We have 100-plus years worth of aggregate experience in hotel management, operations, construction, and development. This is a group that is financially very strong with liquid assets that we need to deliver projects like what we are talking about today. We also have our team members is made up of diverse, from diverse experience and has experience in working with union members in their businesses they deal with. I feel absolutely willing to negotiate in good faith with union workers in the area. We estimate city councils, cities' revenue will be in probably 1.5 million. We'll probably, in the vicinity of 36 new jobs and full-time jobs and about 6, 15 part-time jobs, a total of about 51 jobs will be created through this endeavor. We also are very mindful that this project has to be a reality, and reality for builders, reality for operations, and what cost it has to be done in. So, so I think that, having said that, I'll have Shane make some comments.
If I can also add a few things is, like what Henry Bowes just mentioned, running a hotel requires a lot of team effort, a lot of associates that will be part of this whole team. We're long-term holders, and all our associates become team members, and they literally will grow into a culture that becomes like a family. And like I said, we're long-term holders, well-capitalized, and we're ready to go. In a sense, we have, the partners that we have assembled have been working with us for many years. The core team, like the doctor just mentioned, has been together for 30 years, and the team that will proceed on building this asset has been assembled and have been together for many years as well.
So I'll add one, a couple of the comments, that we have successfully completed comparable projects, several of them with reputable brands, Marriott's, Hilton, and Holiday Inn. We also currently are heading to active investment opportunities. One is being built in San Bruno, north of San Francisco Airport, and one is under review by City of Pacifica, which will be Hampton Inn in Swiss. So we are very much aware of how to build, operate, manage, and we have very much significant local experience of the local challenges of Northern California constructions. We are happy to take any questions if it is appropriate.
Okay, and if you could just mention it up.
Yeah, I would like to mention one thing. I know that what came up last night was the significance of meeting space, and I didn't sleep last night very well, thinking about how we can do more meeting space in the building and not have to increase the footprint, and we have a very unique way to create a, an exceptional meeting room for this building if we get the chance to do this project, just to let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, city clerk, how many speaker cards do we have, please?
We have eight.
We have eight, I think, and I appreciate already the effort that was placed, and I know that some of the comments will be short, so thank you. So why don't we go ahead for those eight speakers and have three minutes each, and if you can start to begin.
Robert Rieckel, followed by Hersila Villalobos.
Mayor, council, and city staff, Robert Rieckel, down on Seventh Avenue. I would hope that Black Ridge will include approximately 800 square feet of, of meeting space. Last night, they didn't list it on their documents that we saw during, during the negotiations, if you select them. I also would think that maybe Black Ridge, they, they said they were going to do 100% of the extended stay, which to me means there's a little kitchenette area in each one that maybe, like the, the other jo, the other company did, they were only going to do 50%, which meant they had some smaller, smaller rooms. Maybe if Blackstone, Black Ridge reduced a small percentage of the extended stay, that might help them get a little bit more space for a meeting room without having to cut the number of, of rooms. And obviously, I prefer Black, Black Ridge, but I'm just one person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hersila Villalobos, followed by Diana Chow.
Hersila is going to give her remarks in Spanish, and I will translate into English.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Hersila Villalobos, y vivo en South City desde 2002. Llevo 14 años trabajando por un, luchando por un buen trabajo en mi hotel, el SFO Maryup waterfront de San, de Burlingame. Lo que trabajará en este hotel merece mejor sueldo y beneficios de lo que los, mis compañeros y yo tenemos, hemos tenido este momento. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Hersila Villalobos, and I've lived in South City since 2002. I have been fighting for 14 years for a good job in my hotel, the SFO Marriott Waterfront in Burlingame. Those who will work in this hotel deserve better, a better salary, better benefits than what my coworkers and I have had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Chow, followed by Cesar Palanqueras.
Hi, good evening. I'm Diana Chow, and I work at the Hyatt Regency in Burlingame for 30 years. So we all love working in the hotel business, and we're so happy that the ones that spoke today to develop this beautiful property here in San Bruno will make a big difference. All of you look very experienced. I love what Cougar said, that you touched on the union and working together as a team, you have experience. The others too, I'm sure they do as well. So that's what we're here for, just to make sure that you build this beautiful hotel, which we need, but we like to make sure that the employees that you hire will be able to afford, you know, good wages here and able to have good medical and dental and, you know, so if you could please help us to help you, we are good employees. Let's just make sure that it's a union house, all right? So that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
Be a team with the union.
So folks, I'm going to ask during the speakers that we allow each of them to complete and allow them that opportunity. Please no applause, so, because I know sometimes it's hard for folks to get up, but thank you for your comments.
Cesar Palanqueras, followed by Josephine Radbill.
Hi, good evening to all. My name is Cesar Palanqueras. I, I lived in San Bruno for about 10 years. I'm here today because I'm concerned with what the city council members are doing. Why can't you reach out to the community to let, you know, with a loud notice when people are considering selling public land? What is happening tonight is, is not right. So do not rush to take this deal through, do the right thing, and slow down and listen, listen to the voices of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, please.
Priscilla Padasuerta, followed by Susan Young.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Priscilla Padasuerta, and I have worked at San Francisco Airport for eight years. San Bruno city council members, you are responsible for stewarding the community benefits in the sale of this city-owned land. Listen to your community when we say we need good jobs. We don't need more poverty wages and no health care for our families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Susan Young, followed by Liselle Malona.
Good evening, city mayor and city council. My name is Susan Young, and I have lived in San Bruno for 30, in Colby Way for 30 years. City council, how can you ignore our voices and rush this deal through? You need to slow down and listen to us when we say new development in San Bruno should be, include good jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Josephine Radbill.
Sorry, Liselle Malona.
And Liselle Malona, followed by Josephine Radbill.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Liselle Malona, and I have lived in San Bruno for 22 years. I've lived in Fleetwood Drive. I am here today because I care about the future of San Bruno. I want to live in a city that is governed by leadership responsive to community input, not a city council that pushes through sales of city-owned land right before an election. City council, please slow down this decision and include the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Josephine Radbill.
Good evening. My name is Josephine Radbill, and I'm a research analyst at Local Two, where we represent hotel workers. I am here tonight, along with all these Local Two members and San Bruno residents, to urge you not to select a developer tonight. There hasn't been enough outreach, and you need to slow down this process until the developers have answered the question of what promises they bring to the community. There is a stark difference between good and bad jobs in the hotel industry. The difference is between having to work multiple jobs to make ends meet and having time to spend with your kids. The difference is between affordable family health care and racking up thousands of dollars of medical debt. In 2017, we surveyed hotel workers at non-union properties in San Mateo County. Housekeepers earned 1448 an hour. 55% of workers reported skipping breaks, skipping lunch, or staying after their scheduled eight-hour shift in order to complete their work. Is this what the workers in San Bruno deserve? Compare this to union hotels, where workers earn over a living wage, have a manageable workload, have respect on the job, and a dignified retirement. City council, you've given incomplete notice, and you've rushed this process. Two back-to-back meetings, 24 hours apart, with less than a week's notice. How is the community supposed to digest what the developers are proposing, or even talk to their city council members about this major decision? We are left to wonder, are you rushing this in before an election? Because you are certainly rushing this deal through without bringing the community along. Remember, 3,200 San Bruno voters signed a petition last time, asking for a voice in this process. We're aware that the developers have both referenced, including the union, as a stakeholder they'd be reaching out to, but neither of them has been in touch about this offer. You shouldn't decide on anyone before they decide on what they are actually promising the community. Don't make this major decision based on vague statements. The workers who will eventually clean the rooms and scrub the floors deserve real promises. As we have said early and often, the time to ask the developers to make this promise is before you choose them, not after. The question of whether the developers will sign a promise of good jobs is just as important to the process as the brand, the operator, or the hotel's design. City council, you have a chance to do the right thing tonight. Tell the developers that the entire community of San Bruno cares about good jobs, and that maybe in other places developers can build hotels without committing to the community that they will provide living wages, affordable health care, and respect on the job, but that in San Bruno, that's just not good enough. Don't decide on a developer until they've made a promise of good jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speaker cards? Hold on, folks. Okay, I have no other speaker cards, but thank you, everybody, for your attentiveness and being respectful to our speakers. Thank you. City manager?
Sure. So now's the point where we will go to council deliberations and discussions, but a number of comments have been raised, and so I think it's worthwhile to address them. So a number of comments were raised about rushing this process. Absolutely not. The city council is not rushing this process. What I want to articulate, and I know we went into excruciating detail last night, and those in the room tonight don't have the benefit of that because they were, they were not there, but, but it's important to understand that the vision for a hotel on this site goes back more than 20 years. The city entertained a master plan for the Crossings Development that always included a hotel, and back in 2012, when the city purchased the land, they entered into, shortly thereafter, they entered into a process to seek hotel developers, and in 2013, one was identified. Discussions with that developer ensued, and there were a number of both labor actions and concerns with the performer that that developer was proposing, because they did not, in their performer plan, for prevailing wage or union operations, and the added construction costs ultimately resulted in that developer notifying the city in 2018 that they would not execute the purchase and sell agreement. And so in 2019, and we, we went over this last night, the city engaged CBRE, and they launched a full-out marketing campaign with brochures and reached out to both international and national hotel developers to seek a development here. That was announced to the community in various forms. I know it was in my newsletter. I know it was on the city's website, and so the city, the larger community has been very aware that the city is seeking to remarket the site for a hotel development. One of the things I also want to point out is that this is not the end. Should the city council decide on a developer to enter into exclusive negotiations with, that is not the end of the process. It's actually the beginning of the process. Unfortunately, because OTO backed out, we find ourselves once again at the beginning of, of a process deciding which developer we will enter into exclusive negotiations to develop a purchase and sell agreement. That process will take about six months, and so we're not rushing it before an election. In fact, the decision on the purchase and sell agreement will actually occur about approximately six months from now, after the new council is seated. After, and it may not even be a new council, because there, there will be the results of, of an election. And so one of the things that certainly the city staff recognizes is, it is our job to obtain the community's vision, which for over 20 years has been a hotel on this site, not only to provide the one-time revenue for city programs and services, but also to provide good jobs, and also to provide ongoing revenue to help the city sustain itself so we can afford to employ the, the, the city workers that we employ and provide good jobs and great benefits. And so this is a multi-year, multi-pronged effort that we're engaged in, and essentially, we have two people that have gone through an extensive process and submitted a proposal to the city council, and what's before the city council is to decide which one of those developers will actually engage and sit down and strike whatever deal they strike with, with all of the trades, while they're negotiating a purchase and sell agreement with, with the city. And so I understand the sentiments that have been expressed, and I just want to sort of just reiterate, we unfortunately are at the beginning of the process again, but that process will hopefully conclude with a purchase and sell agreement approximately six months from now, and that is the, the decision point, and that deal will, will outline all of the terms for the sale of the property.
Thank you. All right, so now we're back to council. Questions from council? Michael? Through the chair, thank you, please.
Thank you, please. I have a few questions. First one related to the extended stay. I mean, I want some clarification on the two proposals. I believe one said that it would be a fifty-fifty split and the Black Ridge would be all extended stay, so I wanted clarification on if that was, in fact, the breakdown. And I wanted to see if we could get some commentary from our consultants in terms of, in the market, is either of those configurations more or less marketable?
The hotel expert, yes.
Well, first and foremost, I don't know, Scott, for Black Ridge, is it, are you going to be a hundred percent or are you fifty-fifty as well?
Well, you know the Element brand.
Yeah, it's got Element, well, it's got a component that does not have to be fully extended stay. Correct? Right. Yeah, so very quick.
Repeat that for the benefit of the people at home. One second, one second. We want you to speak into the microphone because we have people at home. And so either, Henry, I want you to repeat what he said for the people at home to hear.
Henry, you can go ahead and just repeat his answer, please.
You bet. So both parties have picked the Element by Weston brand, which is a Marriott brand. As part of that brand, forty percent of the rooms, up to forty percent of the rooms, would be considered, don't have to be extended stay, fully extended stay. So those rooms can be smaller, as we saw from the Cooper proposal. That was a way for them to put more rooms into the box or in the envelope that they're trying to do. That, from a marketing perspective, is the most important thing, is to get as many rooms as you can into the envelope, as we call it. So the ability or the flexibility of this brand to allow you to do a mix of fully extended stay, which are larger rooms, and non, which are a little smaller, but still do have a small kitchenette in them, allows you to do that. Does that answer your question?
That partially answers my question. So there is some flexibility in doing that. And definitely maximizing the number of units is important, but also being able to fill those units is important. And so the second part of my question was, is one model or the other going to be more likely to get to an expected capacity, eighty percent or whatever?
Yeah, yeah. And from that standpoint, that, out of two-hundred-and-thirty people and thirty who signed, the fact that we got two that wanted the same brand talks about probably the highest value in terms of what brand would drive the most customer base. Element is at the top end of what we would call the extended stay spectrum. So Residence Inn is here, and then Marriott's positioned Element at a higher end, more upscale, which allows both parties to improve their average rate, as we saw there. Extended stay is excellent on the weekends and also appeals to more of a leisure component, too, with a small kitchenette. And then those people that are moving in to the area or really looking at staying or relocating because of whatever corporation they're working with, it appeals to those customers as well. So extended stay by a class usually run, I would say, maybe four to five full occupancy points ahead of just a normal hotel because of those factors.
So I could infer from that that having more of the extended stay units is a benefit rather than trying to cram more units?
Well, since the whole brand is considered extended stay, then it appeals to both. So from that standpoint, that is fine. And really, it's that mix that both developers are trying to figure out, like what's that mix of business or in terms of sizes that'll appeal the most to their customer base. What we found, that even in looking at their pro formas and the TOT tax revenue, that they're pretty similar. One-point-five million for each, which kind of gives you the same sense that they're in that eighty percent of two-forty range.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have a couple more questions. I'll keep going. The other ones were related to just parking in the area. And I was asked if there could be a potential arrangement with Jack's Restaurant, which is currently using part of that lot as their parking. And I know that the parking is pretty minimal for the use that's already planned, and if there's any expected downtime where excess capacity could be used by the restaurant.
Hi, Darcy Smith, Community and Economic Development Director. So as a part of the development review process, we will look at the parking demand that's anticipated from the hotel. We are aware that the restaurant nearby does utilize parking here. However, it's always sort of complicated when you burden an existing parcel with sort of spillover parking demand, just like when you burden the neighborhood with that. So I think we'd want to talk to Jack's and understand more about their current parking demand and try to work with them to address that within their property and their site first, and then analyze the parking demand for the hotel and try to make sure that's met on their site. There are complicated legal agreements that can be worked out, but generally, it's best if each site provides parking within its site independently. So that would be what we strive to achieve. However, I will emphasize that there's always sort of a complex analysis of trying to predict future demand, right? And so I think what we've seen with hotel demand is it's just gone substantially down. But as was discussed with sort of the clientele, there's a weekend clientele, which maybe is more for recreation or leisure. They may have a vehicle, for example, whereas the business traveler during the week may not have a vehicle. And so I think we'd want to analyze the parking demand at different times and see if there's maybe some flexibility just with the potential uses. But I want to emphasize that we actually see them being synergistic. So to the extent there isn't a full-service restaurant at this hotel as proposed right now, we anticipate that the adjacent restaurant and all the commercial uses would be sort of available to the customers of the hotel. And that would be a positive thing, too, that we reduce kind of vehicle trips on the site.
Okay. Excellent. I just want to expound that. It's also important for us to remember that Jack's use of this lot is a temporary condition. And because the lot has sat vacant, always envisioned for a hotel, the city did enter into a lease agreement with Jack's at a very minimal amount for overflow parking. But this site was always in the plan to be developed as a hotel. And so while Jack's is doing at times a really great business and using the overflow lot, that occupation or usage of that lot was always to be temporary.
Okay. And then one final question just related to the availability of shuttles. I know a lot of the other hotels in the area and even the motels have shuttles that go to the airport and sort of make the rounds up and down El Camino. And I was wondering if this particular chain either participates in that or would, has some sort of relationship with other hotels or something that would make it economically feasible for them to participate in a shuttle system? But.
I can start the answer and then Henry can say it. But it, as part of the parking demand study and also looking at just trip generation and traffic impacts from the potential hotel, we would look at the transportation demand management strategies. So I think you heard last night, there was sort of one proposal that said maybe we'd provide transit passes to the employees to try to subsidize transit usage. Well, that same idea could be a shuttle. Whether it would be dedicated or not, I think we'd work that out later, depending on demand. But most hotels, especially ones near the airport, do find it beneficial to attract customers to have a shuttle. And typically, it is a dedicated shuttle. However, I know of a hotelier in town who said, well, you know, we saw that demand go down, but what we did is we gave them a free Uber or Lyft voucher to use for about fifteen dollars. So that kind of enticed them. But shuttles are also more efficient because they can carry multiple people. I think we'd work those details out when we get the development application being processed and we work on this transportation demand management plan and look at sort of what the demand is for that, too. Maybe Henry can add a little bit more based on his experience directly with the Element brand.
No, I think you're exactly right. I mean, it's interesting. I think both parties, the developers, are interested in providing transportation solutions, not only for, to the airport and back, but to the local corporations. Just the trend lately has been that, you know, Uber and all these shared Lyft programs have taken over where the shuttles haven't really been economically feasible. So they've, there's an intent, we heard last night from one of the groups, to definitely look at it and include it. But, and we do see in both south of the airport and north of the airport, that there are shuttle shares where companies will share, or hotels will share one shuttle that goes to multiple properties.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it. No more questions.
Are there questions from council? Marty? And Laura?
I was interested in hearing from each of the developers on what their history of labor is with their properties, how recently have agreements have been made, and which locations have that occurred? If we can get some response to that, please.
Well, we developed the Hyatt Place in San Francisco, and as part of that process, we signed a new charity agreement with Local Two.
Currently, we have a few hotels in entitlement and under construction. We have not, we've not opened a hotel yet in this Bay Area, but we're in the process of opening three. So I'm sure we will be engaging with the local community to make sure that the employees are part of the team. So right now, we have one under construction and two under entitlements in Pacifica. And I'm sure we will be able to fulfill the neighborhood and the community's needs.
Understandably, labor is really important in our community. And in our staff report, I'm going to ask our city manager to kind of talk a little bit about the process and the expectations as we enter into this exclusive agreement, what is expected to occur. It's here on page three of our staff report. City Manager, if you could.
Javon?
Yes. Javon Grogan, City Manager. What the council member is referring to is a portion of the staff report, and I will just read that paragraph for everyone. The city expects that while the exclusive negotiating agreement process is occurring, the prospective developer will embark on a separate effort to formalize their personnel and contracting relationships related to construction and operations of the future hotel. The terms and conditions of those relationships are important so that the city council will have the confidence that a hotel will be developed on the site within the anticipated timeframe. And so what that really says is what I said earlier. We're at the beginning of the process where we are selecting a developer to enter into exclusive negotiations with. And while we are doing that, we expect the developer to engage with labor both on the construction side and on the operation side. And we will, the city council will have that information when they return to execute, to authorize a purchase-and-sale agreement.
Marty, if it's, and just for the record, too, for Henry and Jay, when you went out and advertised, that was made very aware to those that were doing that of the history, of the need, of the want, and the desire to take it to the end. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
He said yes.
Yes.
Sorry, Henry said yes.
And just to clarify, again, the timeline, it's also in our staff report. Negotiate the purchase-and-sale agreement from October to February of 2020. From February to March, adoption of the fully negotiated sale agreement. So it, there's time. And as our city manager stated, we are early in the process. So those things are really important to everybody here, and it's important to us. So I hope that alleviates some of the concern of the rush and of the hearing that we're actually listening, because we do. We are listening. We don't want to get into another position, what happened in the past. We all want to see that hotel. So bear with us, and I look forward to making a choice here real soon.
Laura?
Thank you. So to the residents and to union workers who are in this room, we hear you. It's not a, it's not a topic that any one of us feels like it doesn't hit home. Because in a lot of ways, we all struggle, right? You know, working through lunches, not getting breaks, barely making it, trying to pay your bills. As a city council person, we all had to knock on doors and walk door-to-door and listen to the residents. And our San Bruno residents struggle, right? Most of them are in some sort of labor job where they're working hard and they're working long hours. And some of them are now traveling in long hours. And many of you who are here tonight have probably traveled long hours to get here this morning, or get to work this morning and now be here tonight and eventually get home and turn around and do it again. So we, as a council, and I can probably speak for all of us, want to make the best decision forward, and we don't take this lightly. This is our, really, our third meeting on this project, on this topic, and we have had the time to look at the details of it. I feel like we've, the staff is engaged in a company that's been very reputable, that's gone out and is, and is, does, knows this business very well. I appreciate the comments and the documentation we've been provided. And that if you look at twenty-nine different companies, developers, and only two are here tonight, one backed out recently, says to you that it's a complicated thing, it's not perfect for everybody, it's on a small site, and they know what we're going into. I feel that it's important that we, as a city, that we support the development, is it's been something for twenty years that we've wanted to see a hotel at the site. I don't want to rush into anything. I want to do it right. And again, I think it's important that we know that just tonight is committing to saying, we want to proceed with this developer when we want to negotiate the final details. And I have concerns about parking because I know that Jack's does park in the overflow lot, but there's not a lot of parking in the neighborhood. There's residential parking for the complexes, and those are always full. So this hotel has to sustain themselves. They can't be overflowing into the parking lot, over into the streets, to then affect the residential neighborhoods for the complexes that are nearby. I'd like to see what staff can do to working with Jack's to come up with more parking because it's been a successful restaurant in San Bruno, along with the other businesses there. So parking's a concern. I know that we have the dedicated staff to work out ways to improve parking and look at different ways of transportation. I think that's important. I'd like to see something where we can involve a transportation into our downtown area, right? There's a Tamfran Shopping Center across the street, they can walk to it, but let's get folks that are coming in to visit and eat at one of our beautiful restaurants that are downtown because there's plenty of them and shop at our downtown areas. There's some good delis, too, delis. So I think that there's a lot of things that we still, as staff and council, will work with and work on the details. But I think tonight, I think that there's, you know, a developer we can choose, and I feel confidently that we can make a good decision.
Henry?
I echo a lot of what Laura said. We're not taking this lightly by any means. We've talked to many of you at different times. We've talked to people in the residents. We've all knocked on doors. And we don't take this lightly, and it, we haven't been rushing. We've looked over these pages and pages. We've talked, we've had meetings, we've discussed it. So please, we're not, we're not rushing into anything. And please understand that this is the beginning of the negotiations. Both developers are committed to working with you. Both of them are going to, whichever one we decide on, that they'll take the next step. They can't negotiate when they don't know if they're going to have the job to do the hotel, though. That's, it just doesn't work that way. So we hear you. We've always heard you. We have been working on this. And as Laura said, to go from thirty to two, again, shows how complicated and difficult this site is and how, you know, we have two dedicated groups that want to do it. So we're going to pick one tonight and go forward.
Yeah, just something I would want to address. My understanding is we did have three, so I know there was some confusion. I thought there was three, but there's two. So if I, if correct, the third person or group dropped out Friday afternoon?
Yes. Yes. So we initially, when we planned yesterday's presentation, we had three developers, and we planned that on a special night, because we planned to have three and go into detail. Late on Friday, after the agenda was posted, Cade Development did back out. Both of the two developers that are here tonight are proposing a $6 million purchase price. Cade Development was proposing a $7 million purchase price. However, the reason stated when they backed out was increasing construction costs and potential issues with labor unions.
So some of my thoughts, when we talk about listening, there was a commitment I made in 2017 in Foster City, and that was in regards to the hotel. And that is in regards to, if we should come down this path again, would you be willing to sit and talk? And Cynthia, who emailed me with not a lot of notice before our Tuesday meeting, with a couple days, certainly met, I think, close to an hour, hour-plus, and kept that commitment that I made before you folks were dealing with this. So we do listen, we do keep our word when it comes to serious things like this that affect the community on a broad base. I do also have some of the, you know, we're talking about the parking exception, which would have to be looked into further, correct? Because you have one developer at .77 and another one at .70. And in essence, we're looking at 1.1, or let's just say 1.0. So that includes, to my knowledge from last night, that includes current, those employees that will be working there. So the overflow, that we've allowed Jack to do that, was something temporary. And I know they were also using the dental, I think it's Russo Dental, also paying them to utilize that parking for a long time, and now they've been using the city lot. So that is also something that is concerning me. I think there's some transportation or some incentive for employees to utilize so that they're not driving as much, to where shuttles would be excellent. I know there was some discussion on the size of the room. We understand it's not 212 or 213, where our vision, the community's vision back then was 3,000 square feet, when it was offered 20 years ago. I understand that those things have changed, and the market has changed. But I think that's still something that I will say I hold wishing to have some type of a meeting room, or something that is available. We understand, as far as working out the percentages with the extended stay. I think that on the front, we have a comparison here, and a lot of it is similar in nature. And on a personal note, I want to thank both the developers who came last night, who came back tonight, to sit and assist us in making a decision, what's best for the community as a whole. So those are some of my initial comments, and I echo a lot of what was said, so I won't repeat that, because I know people want to go home at some point, too. Any other questions or comments from council?
Through the chair.
Michael.
I wanted to reiterate that I also don't feel that we're rushing the process. It does seem like we've, we've been talking about the project for a long time. When we had, we went significantly down the process with OTO years ago, and it was very disappointing when it eventually fell through. But I also do feel that there is some sense of urgency in trying to get a project built, when one of our only three proposals backed out and cited increasing construction costs is one of the reasons. And we see it in all of our construction projects, where the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. We have a park that was delayed, and we're seeing significant costs due to those delays. So I do feel it is important that we arrive at a decision tonight that will allow us to move forward and start addressing a lot of the questions and a lot of the negotiating points that we'll, we'll need to, to move through. Both of the proposals are very similar, so I don't know that it's going to be a super easy decision to decide, even though we're down to two, I don't know that it's going to be simple. There's not a lot of difference between the two in terms of what we saw in the proposal. But I, I have to say that even, even with these two very nice projects that we're getting, it's clearly not, not at the same level as what we saw with the prior proposal, and it's certainly not what was envisioned originally when the voters approved the height limits in the area for a hotel. So we're seeing the market change, the demand changes, and it seems like the scope keeps eroding and eroding. So again, I think it is very important that we move forward. The city needs the revenue from this hotel. It's a very important project to us, and so I hope that we can arrive at a decision. So with that, I guess I'm looking for some direction from you, Mr. Mayor, in terms of how we should proceed. Are we going to debate finer points of each proposal, or do we want to move toward a recommendation?
Well, if the council feels it's important to hear any feedback they may have that want to be placed before the audience and before each other as we deliberate, I think that's a good place to start. And then I think we should go ahead, and somebody can introduce the resolution, or we can kind of take a consensus. But eventually, if we're going to take action, we will need to have it and record it. So up on the screen for the audience as well, you can see the, and I understand, I wear glasses, so it's not that large, but it kind of gives you a comparison of side by side. There we go, that helped, thank you. And so that is what we're looking at as well. It kind of gives you the title of under company, the Black Ridge, and then, of course, the San Bruno Crossroads. And so it gives you, as Michael was saying, there are a lot of similarities in some of it, and a few that are not.
Through to the mayor, if I will. Yes, absolutely, there are a lot of similarities in the proposals, but I would like to point out a couple of differences that were presented last night. One is, there's a difference in the proposed meeting room space between Black Ridge and Cooper. Black Ridge is proposing up to 1,000. Cooper, their proposal was for 525 square feet. However, they did say tonight that they may have different ways to increase that. Another significant difference is the construction type. Black Ridge is proposing type two, type one or type two construction, which is typically your podium with wood on top. Cooper is proposing a more expedited construction process with modulators. And what was talked about last night is that is an emerging way in this area to develop hotels, where most of the labor to construct those hotels will be outside of the area, and in this case, in Idaho, and outside labor may be brought in to do some of the onsite construction. And so that is what we have before us. Type one, type two is something that is sort of tried and true. We, I do think we would be introducing a little bit of risk with the modular, and so we would just need time to work through any of those, any of those issues. As far as the price and capital sources, both developers are very much well-equipped to execute on this project. Either it's their capital partner or equity on hand. And we did have information that we did receive from Cooper today on their liquidity for their justifying that. Another difference that we heard is Black Ridge has recently developed a project in San Francisco where they worked with Local Two and developed a car check neutrality agreement. Cooper Hotels has a number of projects that are in the pipe, in various stages of the pipeline, but they have not yet engaged on a project in the Bay Area with Local Two. But absolutely right, we went through a very detailed and thorough process, and so we're landing here tonight with two people that are proposing the exact same product, a Element by Weston, a Marriott product, and many of the same deal terms, but there are some unique differences that I think were worth highlighting.
Okay. Thank you to city manager for that recap, and for everybody in the audience, too. I don't know if council's feeling comfortable with making comments on who they want, or if they really feel it's important for us amongst each other to have more interaction. I'm prepared to have my statement of what I'm, what I'm believing, but I don't want to detract if other folks want to talk among themselves first.
Through the chair. I think our city manager actually put it perfectly, and I was going to make some of the same comments, that I think the modular out of state is a concern that I have. Like you say, you could see the comparison side by side, I think that they're very comparable. I do think the meeting space being larger is important. The rooms is about the same, very, very, not much different, a little bit more on the parking, which, again, will kind of get into some negotiations. I'm ready to also make a decision, and I'd actually like to make a motion.
Well, why don't we just say, it's, so I'm prepared for the motion, because I'm, I have it already, we want all make our statements, we can do that. I'll just, I'll go next, and then if somebody, if you want to go ahead and introduce the resolution, that's fine.
Through the chair.
Yes, Michael.
It would be helpful if maybe we, as people make their comments, we kind of get a clue as to where they would be leaning?
Yeah.
Because I, I'm guessing I know where you're going, Laura, but if we know what your, what your proposal is going to be, then that'll clue us in as to whether we should just let it go, or?
Yeah, I would, I would support Black Ridge, just because of the type one, type two construction and not modular, a little bit more on the parking, and definitely on the square footage of the, of the meeting space.
Okay. Thank you. No, I'm glad you asked. So I share some of the same, as far as Black Ridge. The meeting room is kind of an important element, and I understand that the, the other developers said, "Hey, we can increase that." The parking ratio is a little bit higher, still not to where, still to where I am concerned, but it is a little bit higher. Also, the modular is a different style than our community has dealt with, and I'm not saying that we are not prepared to, but I like something that I feel comfortable and confident with. And having it here and not outsourced in Idaho, and then a installation team potentially coming from Colorado to do that here, I am more comfortable and confident with that work being done here. I think it's important to this community, I think it's important to this county, I think it's important to those that plan to work. I also think it's very important, too, because as we've said, we want to be able to have this come to completion. We want to see this done. And to me, having, going down the path of having dealt with that, having a hotel in San Francisco, obviously, that has been done. And I think, you know, actions speak louder than words at times, and I think that there's some experience and practicality into those relationships, and so I think that may be of a value as well. So to be clear, I am supporting and I would vote for and will Black Ridge. Marty?
So yes, this is an important decision, and I want to thank both firms for being involved with it. I'm also in favor of Black Ridge. I am, I appreciate that they have a local general contractor out of San Jose that's been involved with four projects here in the Bay Area. I think it's really important that we be concentrating on local and experience in that area. Their, their size of their, Black Ridge's size of their projects are, on average, twice the size of the projects that were, that are, Cooper has done. I wish we had another site that we could kind of say, "Okay, well, we want you here at one, and we'll have another one, but we'll have to find that site." But I also in favor of Black Ridge on this project.
Thank you. Michael, Irene?
Through the chair.
Michael.
So I agree with all of those comments, and one thing that I found very attractive about the modular construction was that the timeline could be so dramatically compressed, and so that was, that would have been a major point for me, and just trying to get this thing built sooner. But I agree with the other comments that it does add some risk, and we do lose the local jobs that would be associated with creating those modular components that would be out of state. And so I agree with all the statements so far, and I support the Black Ridge proposal.
Yes, I, too, is intrigued by the modular. I wish we could compress the construction time for the real. I think it was like a third of what the Black Ridge construction would be. But again, it's local people that you're using, and you have experience with that. So I think that that's the way to go. So again, as Marty said, I wish we had another site, we could give one to each of you, and, but it's not possible. So I, too, would vote for Black Ridge.
All right, so let me go back to Laura, and as you started to begin, why don't I have you go ahead and introduce the resolution, please?
I'd like to introduce resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an exclusive negotiating rights and agreement with the selected developer, Black Ridge.
Second.
Motion made in second, city clerk.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Well, thank you all for being here this evening, to the developers, thank you for your time and wanting to invest in San Bruno, we appreciate it. And to everyone, we can pause for a second, because I'm sure you want to kind of get out to your cars. Or you're welcome to stay.